Record of attendance. Absent with regrets, so we have deputy mayor. The deputy mayor with regrets, okay. Any declarations of conflict of interest? And you can call the conflict at time of the meeting, at the time of the. And approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? Yep, go ahead. I can't believe I can't, I still did it. Hang on there Wade. I do it same every time.
Yeah, but I did it for you this time, so.
I just might. I just might.
Your worship, I have an addition. Economic impact supports. And actually, once Neil comes up and makes his presentation, perhaps he can remain seated and we'll address that at that point.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hood?
Your worship, late last week, we received a copy of a letter addressed to the water utility regarding the changes in the guidelines for lid. I can speak briefly to that later on when we come to the reports from Chairman.
Okay, so I'll just add it, just in case, under 10B, water utility. And CAO, go ahead.
Your worship, if time permits, I believe the town engineer is going to have a presentation on asset management, but we'll, like, as I say, if time permits.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moved and seconded, how those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried. Presentation, Music Week. Welcome Neil.
Thank you. Is this, is this mic work, it sounds like it's working?
It does. You might have to get nice and close to it, but that's, good.
Everybody, thanks for allowing me to present today. Today, I wanted to talk to you about Nova Scotia Music Week. So, one of the tactics that Yarmouth and Acadian Shores has, utilizes to bring events, or sorry, to bring visitors to the region. Obviously, we do lots of marketing, we do product development. One of the other tactics that Yarmouth and Acadian Shores Tourism Association uses is working with events rights holders to facilitate those events coming and choosing Yarmouth and Acadian Shores as a destination for their event. The specific event that I want to talk to you today about is Nova Scotia Music Week. Nova Scotia Music Week has occurred in Yarmouth and Acadian Shores four times, 2010, 11, and 12, and most recently, 2015. Nova Scotia Music Week is committed to ensuring growth of our music sector through education, training, communication, promotion, and artist recognition. Nova Scotia Music offers members these services in increasingly competitive and ever-changing music industry. The flagship of these efforts is Nova Scotia Music Week. In its focal point each year for members of the industry, it is the focal point. Nova Scotia Music Week provides professional development showcasing opportunities and an opportunity to heighten awareness and increase exposure and audience appreciation to the Nova Scotia music experience in the host community. Nova Scotia Music Week is an annual celebration that brings music fans, musicians, high-profile music industry professionals, and media together for four days of industry and public access events. Each year, Nova Scotia Music Week includes a public music festival, a professional development conference, an international music buyers program, and Music Nova Scotia Awards celebration. Nova Scotia Music Week is a wonderful testimony as to how the public music festival and a business-to-business industry conference can blend. The showcasing festival and conference, sorry, concert components are aimed at presenting the talents of Nova Scotia artists, including local artists, to the public and to industry professionals. While the awards presentations are a celebration of achievement and provide heightened public recognition, conference topics range from presenting core industry know-how to one-on-ones, to exporting and exploring current emerging issues facing the music industry, along with potential approaches and solutions. The intent of me being here today is to get you excited about the opportunity to host Music Week again. The bid has been released, the bid is due May 15th. My intent is to approach all our YASTA partners, including the hotels, in support of the licensing fees for the event. So, there are costs associated with hosting Nova Scotia Music Week. Events like this have what they call licensing fees, and there's an upfront cost to actually have the event. The cost to host the event would only be needed if the event was won, and would only be needed for the 2020-21 fiscal, so no funds would be required for this budget year for any of our partners. There is substantial economic impact and visitor expenditures related to Nova Scotia Music Week, so your investment is one that comes with a return on investment. There is some metrics, the last time the event was held in Yarmouth, the, sorry, there was a study done, that was commissioned in 2011, that actually did an economic impact assessment around the 2010 event, and there's some, in your package you have, there's some quotes from that event. So, for example, the typical visitor party spend was $1,295 or $443 per person. In total, spending in the Yarmouth County by out-of-county visitors during Nova Scotia Music Week was $325,000. So, substantial return on that investment for the licensing fees. The typical visitor at Yarmouth County indicated they spend an average of 3.5 nights on their trip to Nova Scotia Music Week, which is, again, one of the metrics that we're always after, is we want people staying here and spending money. Some other significant quotes here, in 2010, Nova Scotia Music Week provided a significant economic impact to Yarmouth County. The combined operations and visitor expenditures directly associated with the events totaled $539,000. And in Truro, which is where the event has been held for the last three years, the 20, or sorry, the last two years, 2019, this year will be the last year that, well, it may not be the last year, but this will be the third year in a row that Truro has hosted the event. Nova Scotia Music Week in 27 between Truro resulted in almost 1.5 million in direct spending in the host community. So, the event does bring visitors. We've had past experience with this event. We know it fills our hotels, we know the community definitely supports it through volunteers and certainly musicians in our area get a leg up by having this event here. And we know that there's a return on that investment. There is a risk, obviously, we have to work to ensure that we're, you know, filling the venues, selling the tickets, getting the sponsorships that we need to do, but that's all the work that the team does once the event has been, has been won. At this stage, what I'm doing is approaching all our partners and forging other partnerships to facilitate the licensing fees and the in-kind contributions. So, getting down to the nuts and bolts of all this, the licensing fees required to host Nova Scotia Music Week in 2020 is $30,000. Yarmouth and Acadian Shores is intending to ask and has asked, started the process, you're my second presentation, $10,000 from each partner, again, to be budgeted in the 2020-2021 fiscal. The funds would only be required if the bid was won, and again, they'd only be required in the next year's fiscal. The, there is some in-kind costs as well, the bid requires 20,000 in in-kind costs. The, some of those in-kind costs are actually things like community pageantry, so banners and signs around the community, or community-owned venue rental fees, so something like the Mariners Centre, for example. So, my intent is to get $10,000 from our four core partners, which would total $40,000. That would take up about $10,000 of the in-kind contribution. But that 10,000 wouldn't necessarily have to be all cash. Some of it would be cash, some of it may be offsetting the costs of Mariners Centre rental, for example. The hotels are also expected and would be applicable to the in-kind contributions. The hotels would also have to give up approximately 70 to 80 room nights for the event, so there's a cost associated with that that would go against that 20,000 as well.
So, it says host hotel, so does one hotel have to do that 70?
One hotel generally will probably do most of that 70, and that has happened in the past, but we do try to spread that out if possible. But there's other mechanisms that hotel can have to claw back some of those costs associated with giving that. I'm working really closely with the Marketing and Promotions Levy Advisory Committee because they obviously have a lot to gain for this event, so I'll be working with them to see how we can, you know, make things as fair as possible with regards to that. But today, the ask to the Yarmouth Town Council is 10,000 for the licensing fees and to be budgeted, again, only if we win the event, so.
And you need to know that by May?
The bid is due May 15th. I don't need to know today, obviously, because I know you don't, your policy isn't to.
Make decisions.
Grant money or make decisions on presentations. I wanted to present to you and have the opportunity for you to ask me questions regarding the event, and we can go from there. I put a formal letter in the package that you'll have for your record.
Good, thank you. Jim?
Thank you Neil, I'm obviously supportive. You're asking us just for one year, 2020, and what are you, are we going to support you with a bid for the three consecutive years? Is that in the works?
That's, that's the hope. When I put this bid in, I'm bidding on all three years. The licensing fee does creep up slightly for the final year, 2022, where it is 35,000. But for this presentation, I had only intended to ask for the first requirement of the first year. I will be bidding on all of them, and my thought was, if we had won all of the bids, I would come back at that point and have those discussions later. It's hard for you to budget, I would expect it would be difficult for you to budget three years, three years out for events that we don't know we're going to get, but because I'm asking you today to budget another year out for the event we don't know we're going to get. But my intent was to only ask for those funds, again, if we had won those bids.
It's a lot of work, isn't it Neil, for that host committee? It's a lot, a lot of work.
It's a lot of work, yep. There's approximately 150 volunteers required for the event.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you, congratulations, and I'll be supportive.
Thanks.
Good. Okay, Counselor Hood?
Where does this fit in our grants thing? It's not in here. So, this is funding for Acadian, for our portion of, we fund Acadian, whatever.
Yarmouth and Acadian Shores, yes, yes.
Is that a line item in the budget?
We do have a line item that we hold for special events like this, that come up from time to time.
Funding for Yarmouth and Acadian Shores, how is that handled in our budget?
That's a line item in the budget.
But it's a fixed amount that you need each year run.
Right.
So, this is a request beyond that.
This is beyond that because this event, I didn't, the amount of money for this event is not contained within my budget, I didn't put that in the budget because events are as needed, and when this event comes up, it's, that's when we go separately and ask each partner for those things.
So, just for the CAO, but, so, we do have a separate budget apart from this? How much is in that?
In which line?
Events.
Events? I believe it's 25.
25? Don't tell people. But seriously, we haven't approved the budget yet, but.
No, no.
So, all I need to know is, would there be enough funds in the budget for this kind of a, that have not been committed?
This isn't for this year, this is for the following budget year. This won't be for this fiscal year at all.
Or he needs the money, don't you, this year?
I wouldn't, I would just need a commitment that the money would be there if we had won, if we win the bid in 2020.
Well, we can't.
So, we could re, yeah.
We could put a reserve for it.
Or budget for it, I guess, or.
Yeah, you just refer to budget, like we do everything, all the things that come during the year.
Yeah, but when we approve our budget, if we're going to put, we're going to hold it for another year, we're going to have to put it in a reserve account. All right, so we can commit. Thanks. Thank you Neil.
Good.
Thank you.
I'll be supportive.
Okay. Go ahead there Wade. I'm only half a copy in.
Thank you, okay.
Your worship.
Yeah, that's it. Boss. So, at any rate, all I want to say, and you know where I stand on this anyway, is that this is, this is really a no-brainer. We all know how much Nova Scotia Music Week benefited us in the past. We have an enormous music community here which benefits from the presence of this event here, and, I mean, it's in line with everything. The one regret I have, God help me, is that we don't have a brand-new art centre that we could be putting this in, but that's neither here nor there at this point. But this is something we need to support.
Good. Anyone else? So, so next steps, because Jeff, Jim's going to ask, what are the next steps?
Make motion to refer to budget.
Go ahead.
No, I think we have to be more succinct or more, because he's looking for, he has to send a request in by the 15th of May.
Right, so a letter, a letter of support from the town, you know, and a letter or some kind of communication to me that the money would be there in 2020.
You need a letter to you or your association committing that it will be there, you need a letter of support from the town, separate item to send on in your package.
Correct, that's correct, yep.
I'll second your.
All right, is that Jeff, is that the appropriate motion? We're looking for a letter, yes, just looking for a letter of support for the Music Week contest to compete with the other.
As presented.
As presented, yeah.
He's looking for two things, he's looking for a letter of support and a commitment to his association in a letter.
And a $10,000 commitment, yeah.
That we're going to have the money for him next year.
So, you okay with that motion?
You okay with that?
I'm fine, yeah.
You're all set Jeff? That cover everything? Okay, moved and seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried. Yes, we do make decisions, thank you.
Thank you, that's great, that's wonderful.
Thank you.
And MPLAC is also the Marketing and Promotions Levy Advisory Committee, so the hotel association that collects the levy, or that submits the levy, they've also, through a motion on the 25th of March, approved their $10,000 commitment, and there'll be some other in-kind costs that they'll be expected to come up with as well, so.
Excellent. Good stuff, thank you.
Did you need me to stay here, Counselor?
Okay, so are we okay to, does anybody disagree with moving 10A up? Because Neil's here. We okay with that? All right, go ahead there Wade.
Thank you, your worship. The reason I'm asking Neil to stay here is just in case you have questions for him. At our last Yarmouth and Acadian Shores Tourism Association meeting, we discussed, shocker, the ferry. We all know of the unhealthy rhetoric that's been surrounding the ferry over the last while, and we are all quite aware of the damage that that rhetoric has been doing. It's a matter of a lot of discussion at the board level for Yarmouth and Acadian Shores, obviously, because the industry relies on that ferry to grow itself. So, the discussion went in the last meeting towards an economic impact study, which is something that many have discussed, and unfortunately, has not been done. And granted, I feel personally, and I think everybody at this table will feel, that the province needs to step up with that as well, and there's been some indication that they may be interested, but that's more on a side note as it is anything else. What I would like to see is an economic impact study done on the impact of the ferry, on the industry here, and actually, through the province. Now, the discussion led towards probably a study like this costing somewheres upwards of $20,000 or so. We are not asking, I'm not asking for money at all at this point, and as a matter of fact, my personal opinion is that if we go to the next step, which is actually trying to get an economic impact study, we would expect donation, donations, that's not the proper word, contributions from quite a variety of people. The province, the municipality, the other municipalities here, maybe even as far-reaching as, and not exceptional too, but people like Barrington who also benefit. So, I'm not asking for money, I'm certainly not asking for $20,000. But what I would like to see is some kind of support in the theory of it, in which we can kind of build on, on putting this together and seeing exactly how much it may cost, and figuring out how many people would be interested in putting money into that pot, and then I'll come back with those kind of numbers, but we need to, we need to do this. That's me, I'm done.
Okay.
Neil, do you have any questions?
I do, though. So, so a couple of things. We need the economic impact, it's not, and I can be talked down out of this, but I'm just putting it out there, it's not a Yarmouth ferry, it's a Nova Scotia Domain ferry, it's an, it's an international link, and I'll be, but I think everybody, everybody knows the tremendous impact, because you go from rock bottom when it's, when it's taken away. My concern is that we once again start to find partners to pay for something that should be done by the province. For me, it's as, it's as simple as that. So, I think my first step would be to approach the province and say, we need to get, it needs to get done. It needs, for every reason, province-wide, it needs to be done by the province, it needs to be funded by the province, because as soon as we start to do it, it becomes about us again, and it's not about us. It's about Cape Breton, to Yarmouth, to Barrington, to Digby, to Halifax, everybody benefits, and, and I think the right conversations with the provincial government to get this done, for me, that would be my first step, I just, and I, I respect where you're coming from, I understand it, you're absolutely right, we need something done, but for us to pay for something that, we're paying through the teeth now, with thousands of cars driving over our streets that we have to pay for, you know, which we're glad to do, but that's just my first thought. Go ahead, Don.
I guess my thought is that it, we assume that it's been done for a long period of time. It seems like if we don't do it, it'll be another long time before it does not get the ball rolling. So, whether, the government doesn't seem to be interested into spreading out the word that it's a provincial initiative or a, about is how important it is to our province, because they haven't already did the study. We already assumed, that was one of the things that you assume when you're coming on to council, that one of these things would have already been done. To see, you hear people bragging on the radio and all over our province about how much impact and how much money it's made, and yet, there's no real concrete booklet or pamphlet or something to say how, how it's done great works for us. So, I guess, I don't know, it just seems like if we don't, you know, if we keep waiting and waiting, we waited this long, and nothing's happened, so, I don't know, I'm on the fence with this one for sure, and my, I'd be leaning more towards, if we want something done, we got to get off our, we got to get off our butt and get it done, because otherwise, it doesn't get done, it hasn't been done, and how long has that ferry service been of importance to us? Our whole life in this area, and across the province, it should be appreciated just as much.
Yeah, I agree with that. So, Neil, before I go to Cliff, that big sheet you gave me, like, that had a, that had an awful lot of information on it.
So, to Counselor Barry's point, there has been, there hasn't been a, you know, one doctrine, one thing that's can put on the table and say, okay, this is the, this is the absolute facts around the economic impact of the Nova Scotia Domain ferry. There has been lots of studies around the service, there was three studies, I believe, that were commissioned during the process in trying to bring the ferry back, the Nova Scotia International Ferry Partnership, Garner Pinfold was another study, and I believe another study was commissioned by the then, prior to that person being the president, the CEO of Tourism Nova Scotia, Michelle McKenzie, I believe, was part of that study. So, there has been three economic studies around the need for the service, those also, those studies spoke to the type of ferry, you know, roll-on-roll-off, high-speed, versus, actually talked to the ports, but it really spoke to, those studies clearly spoke to the economic impact in the province, and the, and the efforts that the Nova Scotia International Ferry Partnership did, which was an organization that was formed during those dark ages between 2010 and 2014, in an effort to bring the ferry back, and were instrumental in making that happen, they, they did some studies, they also got a lot of information from around the province to show the impact to tourism operators from Yarmouth all the way to Cape Breton. And Tourism Nova Scotia also has studies, so Tourism Nova Scotia does exit surveys, one of the two that are currently out there now is the 2010 exit survey, and there's also been one that's been completed, most recently in 2017. So, those exit surveys, certainly the one in 2017, is, it does speak to some of the metrics around the cat ferry service, it speaks to passenger spend, where passengers are captured, so what areas of the province those passengers go, how long they stay, and their average per-party spend, and obviously, those are really positive things, because what happens is people get, people keep getting caught up in the passenger count versus the subsidy, and they don't look at passenger spend, and it's really easy to make this file political, which is obvious, because it's very political, because the passenger spend is not the narrative that's being sold, what's being sold, certainly from, in my opinion, a very metrocentric position, is that this ferry is, costs too much money, and it only benefits, it doesn't benefit anybody but, other than Yarmouth, is two of the most negative terms you, phrases you hear. And so, there is, I guess, to Counsel Barry's point, there are lots, there is some metrics out there, I think also Bay Ferries has done their own economic impact study, and I believe corporate, corporate research associates did that one. But again, I think what Counsel Cleveland is getting at is that the problem is, where would this study live? Who would, who would be the one commissioning it? Because everybody is, has lots to gain or lots to lose based on where the study comes from. If it comes from us, then, you know, we are obviously, obviously very supportive of the ferry in general, I think, in our community, we should be, and so, will that, would that taint a fair, a study, for example? Would that, would that put a negative slant on it? If it came from the province, it could be, you know, claimed to be political from their perspective, they're just trying to justify, for example, they would be just trying to justify their investment of Nova Scotia taxpayers' dollars. So are we, so, I feel there is a need for the study, I feel where it should live, I'm not sure, I think the province, in the discussions I've had with provincial reps, they would be supportive of funding, not the entire thing, but again, the discussions they had were very, very elementary, very basic, but they, there wasn't a no. For example, I have approached Tourism Nova Scotia and been told absolutely no. It's not something that they do, they don't do studies around the infrastructure, they'll do studies around the impact of those infrastructures, so they would see this as something outside of their purview, but I did ask them, but with regards to TIR and other reps at the provincial level, I have spoken to them directly, and I've been, the response has been positive. So, I do think the province could be a partner. I don't know if that clarifies anything.
It sort of does, but a partner in what, a partner in their.
It would be, who would own the study? Who would be the person commissioning it?
Who would be the one that does the study? Because it's, for me, it can't be us, for a thousand, for a thousand reasons, I could be way off, but man, all we're doing is going out there and saying, this is how it impacts us, which just feeds into the whole narrative that just won't stop. Sorry, Counselor Hood? Yeah, just keep it on, I'll press the button, there you go.
I spent last Thursday and Friday in a director's retreat, we're about a dozen of us, someplace outside Halifax, and after that, I thought, I'm going to keep my mouth shut about this ferry issue. I think that's the best thing everybody could do right now. All due respect, Wade.
Thank you, Neil, there have been all kinds of studies on this thing. If you read like I do, you'll learn that, as of this morning even, in the newspaper, if you read your newspaper every day, Bay ferries in the province of Nova Scotia are in a 10-year contract. Hello? You don't want out of contracts. Even the next government doesn't walk out from under a contract unless they want to pay a gazillion dollars. What stirred this up the most, two things. Was the application by the opposition party under the Freedom Information Act. That's a pretty simple thing. But everybody started, and the beat goes on, because today, the new. Because today, the news will be, it just keeps going on. And people here were talking about economic impacts and all the rest. It's totally irrelevant to what's going to be decided in that case. Totally irrelevant. A judge is not going to hear all the petitions, the wailing, the rhetoric going on about economic impacts. It's totally irrelevant to what's being argued under the Freedom of Information Act. All that's being argued is simple. Does the Freedom of Information Act mandate that certain information is very restrictive, the management fees be released? That's it. So frankly, if the province and Bay Fairies released the information, it would have made probably as much impact as when Lloyd Heinz announced the eight million dollars over in, it was in the news for a day or two. Wasn't good, but it was there. And the more we keep raising it, the more there's to chew on. They're in a ten-year contract. And we're still, you do an economic impact statement right now? You're not gonna get good news, because there's so much front-end money going in. We're the tenants over there in Bar Harbor. And why are we the tenants? I went over there in October personally. And the tourist bureau, or the old tourist bureau that we used to have in Trenton, was open, and I went in there. Looks after Trenton and the island. And I can tell you, there wasn't a whole lot of enthusiasm in that area for the ferry. It's not a big deal to them. In fact, it's a hindrance. They had 3.6 million people pass by Trenton onto, it's right over the bridge to Mount Desert Island and the National Park last year. I was quite amazed. I drove around, I talked to other people. Same kind of a thing. It almost sounded like the town council didn't even, didn't even have a huge priority on it. So anyway, look, if you go rent an apartment, you want to do renovations, the landlord pay him? Not normally. We're tenants over there. And because of 9/11 and all the other things, there's quite substantial costs. I mean, the place was shut down for ten years. Yes, we're gonna rebuild the service. It's expensive. But it's there for another eight years of the contract, or nine, whatever it is. And onward, hopefully. So another study? I'm aware, you mentioned Gardner Pinfold. I don't think this would be a very good time to do a study. You get the information, you just get bad information. Bad from your point of view. It's not very good economics based on this year. What is good economics looking forward is, there are 3.6 million people went on the island. That's not, that's similar to what went on the island in historical times. All we need is 100,000 of those people to say, man, it's crowded here, and hop the ferry to Nova Scotia, on a whim even.
Yeah, there's a huge opportunity with the visitors there, visiting that part.
So let's focus on what we can do and not what we can't do. I think we, I don't think we need to do an economic study at this point. I think, I agree with the mayor on that point. I don't even think we should ask the province for it, because I think they have the numbers. I saw a number in the newspaper six or eight weeks ago that they've estimated, some pretty rosy number, $2,000 per head spend on people arriving.
So that's a...
Based on the exit survey.
Yeah, so that number comes from the 2017 Tourism Nova Scotia Exit Survey. And that number's based on non-resident overnight visitors arriving through Yarmouth.
So what is your take, are you comfortable with that number? Is it a good number?
I am comfortable with that number.
Like plus or minus $200 or something?
Well, I know, I know the, why I'm comfortable with it, because two people that don't necessarily always agree, Tourism Nova Scotia and Bay Fairies, are both providing numbers from different methodology that somewhat agree. So Bay Fairies may say, the passengers are in the province for almost eight days. Tourism Nova Scotia will say seven to eight days. Bay Fairies will say, passenger spend is approximately $2,500 to $2,600. And Tourism Nova Scotia will reiterate that. In the past, there, certainly with NovaStar or other, and Bay Fairies, I've seen a gap in what those two groups are agreeing on. And at the meeting, the meeting that we had last Tuesday in Halifax, where Mr. Houston and all the members of the legislature were able to ask questions to reps from Transportation Infrastructure renewal, Mark McDonald and Tourism Nova Scotia. All three of those groups, Tourism Nova Scotia, Bay Fairies and TIR, were all agreeing clearly on the passenger spend, where the passengers go, how long they stay. For example, they're in our area for 1.8 to 2.1 days. That generates almost $71 million in tourism spend, revenue, or receipts in our region. That's only 3% of the provincial tourism receipts, however. You know, HRM, for example, has 55% of all tourism receipts. We know that, for example, also, the visitors that are coming in on all ferries and all points of entry, 75% of them go to HRM. So I'm inclined to agree with you that there is a lot of upfront costs in the move from Portland to Bar Harbor. And that would probably weigh, or have definitely an impact on any study, because of the leasehold improvements that have had to occur there. But I think probably, at some point, there should be some kind of economic analysis. But maybe when there's more consistency in that market...
Maybe after this season even, if the numbers go up. If the numbers don't go up, I wouldn't ask for it. Be honest with you. You gotta pick your time. Pick your spots.
I think where this is coming from, certainly from YASTA's board perspective, is just the concern. So the board of YASTA is made up of a lot of tourism operators as well. And they're again, having discussions with me, you know, outside of the board meetings, they're having discussions with me saying, we're thinking about selling our property. We're thinking about putting our business up for sale because of the inconsistency and the lack of consistency in the market or the rhetoric we're hearing. It may be, it may be, you know, political rhetoric. And as you mentioned, there's a ten-year contract. The ferry will be running next year. There's a contract that we will be going between Bar Harbor. There are a lot of positive things with regards to the service. But the negative rhetoric can have impact regarding people's investment locally, certainly. Because you look at the market, you think, okay, if I invest this money, as you know, will there be a return on that investment tomorrow? Or will there be enough time for me to recoup that investment? Or should I maybe cut my losses now and sell while there is a market? Or certainly bus operators and tour operators, again, as you know, in New England, which is, Yarmouth and Decatur is biggest market, is New England. They're making decisions and saying, well, if the ferry's gonna be running or not, you know, should I take the risk and book my bus tour on the cat or not? Or drive around? And when they drive around, they're much less likely to come here. So...
There's a simple answer to that question, Neil. The province has a ten-year contract with Bay Fairies.
Right.
Just, that's all you need to say.
Yes, and the province never broken a contract before with the ferry. This government is a threat.
NDP didn't break the contract. Contract ran out and they didn't renew it. I'm sorry, but Wade, I'm not supporting what you're going there. You may be getting pressure that way. I think the mayor's pretty much on mark with this thing, other than asking the province. I think we just should let it sit here, button up our lips, and everything's gonna... We're gonna get out of it this year what we can get out of it. Hopefully, it'll be good and better. But you see, they know those numbers, what I'm trying to tell you. And you've helped me reaffirm what I read in the newspaper. Those are the numbers I've heard. Those are the numbers you're gonna get if you do do a study.
I think if there, if there, if and when there was a study, I think a lot of the study work would be actually just collecting the metrics and data that's already been collected.
The public, they go to, they go grab the, Gardner Penfold, I've used them before. They go grab whatever ones, they pull out of it, those what they need to pull. And then they go get some up-to-date data and add it in there and give you a new one, charge a good fee for it. That's what they do.
I think the information's there. I think you gave me that sheet. The information's there. What we have is a political hot potato that is, that makes everybody nervous, which is true. But it's trumped in a lot of senses by that ten-year deal. The ferry's going to run. And I think that the people we're trying to reach, it doesn't matter if you do a study or ten studies, they say what they say, they believe what they believe. It's just, it's just the ferry against politics. That's, and it's a shame. But I, my biggest fear, genuinely, is, because I, this kills me. Because I hear what you're saying and I, and I get it. But it's us again. It's us screaming. And what we're doing is we are just feeding that narrative that it's, that's already going on. We're make, I think that, I think a study by us makes it worse. But that's just, you know. So that's where, that's where I am. I could be wrong. Am I wrong? Like, what are you, are you even weighing in?
My mouth shut, because the chatter over the ferry was pretty substantial and it was not positive. And there were people from various parts of the province and the city.
So I haven't been, I haven't been tasked by the board of YASTA to request anything. They did want me to speak to, in any opportunities they had to speak to our partners and see what the interest was. And I can bring this back to the board and we can discuss it at our next meeting. Wade, so, yep.
Wade, are you good? Like, do you have, you know, I don't want you to not, go ahead. I don't want you to not say what you have to say. I just have to, go ahead.
I believe we need numbers. I really do. I know what you're saying. And I hear what you're saying, I do. And I understand that in the environment that we're in right now, politically and otherwise, people live in their own little bubbles and seem to not listen to what anyone else has to say, whether it's relevant or not. That's what we're up against. And to me, having those numbers more firmly in place, and yes, your points are all valid. Your points are completely valid. But we need those numbers in our back pocket that we can haul out and say, these are the numbers. And people can say what they will about those numbers once they're there. But to me, I believe we need those numbers.
But we have them.
What if they're bad numbers?
We, but we have them, but we have the numbers.
Well, we have exit strategies and that kind of thing, exit surveys. But an economic impact study seems to have more weight to it, I guess, is my point. Or my belief. But, you know, that's, it's, what council wishes is what we do. So that's fine by me. Don't worry. But it's, in my opinion, we need those numbers, I think. Because we're fighting a fight here. And I know that we're, at this point, I can't say we're losing the fight, but we're certainly losing the political narrative. Perhaps we need to sit and sit quietly until the Bar Harbor service has been in place for two or three years. Because we are changing markets. This is a, this is a transition. But I do have a real fear that this provincial government that's in place right now isn't gonna last forever. And, you know, I've had conversations with, with the honourable member of the opposition, and they weren't very pleasant.
I had one yesterday.
Yeah, they're not pleasant. And he's, even when he's being, or trying to be nice, what he's saying is terrifying. Because what he says is, well, we'll throw some money your way if you'll be quiet. Well, we, you know, maybe, maybe this isn't the right boat. Maybe we need to re-look at the whole thing. This is disgusting.
It is terrifying.
It's ridiculous. And it's becoming extremely frustrating. As I'm sure, perhaps you don't feel it quite as intensely as I do. But it has become ridiculously frustrating.
I do. Halifax Radio called me last week on the federal budget. And their first question was on the ferry. Are you okay with talking about the ferry? I said, you might want to make it quick. Because I'm tired of defending what we know is right. Anyway, he just kept moving, but, so I, I hear you. Go ahead, Jim.
So I know Neil mentioned that he's spoken with folks at TIR. You know, it is a, it is a provincial ferry. It is funded by the province. They have a contract with a private operator. And we're very supportive and we benefit greatly from that, this region and indeed the province. But I think you need to be in lockstep with the province on their service. Imagine the province coming in and saying they're gonna do an economic impact assessment on our transit service. Right? So it's their program. What is their strategy around the defending their decision, their contract, their service? And it may be that they understand that by continuing to feed the narrative, you keep the story alive. It may be that it's too early in the ten-year contract to do a study. Maybe they have a plan to do one in year eight, you know, as they're approaching the end of the contract. You know, there is, I'll stop there. But there are variables, as we've seen this year. You know, the run to Portland, changing to Bar Harbor. So that, that changes and that might change the calculation of what the benefit is and what the costs are of that service. And so I think it, you know, might be early in the life of the contract and maybe it's not... I know when the province moved this into TIR, that was intentional, right? It was to put it in the same place as the other ferry and transportation services. So it was to take it, to try and change it from being this standalone special project to being, yeah, it's just like every other bit of transportation infrastructure and contracts. It's gonna be under this department and we're not gonna make a big deal out of it. It happens to resonate in other parts of the province. And, you know, we know locally that when we have, when we have an issue like potholes, as an example, people will pile on with, well, if you weren't spending money on this or that, then you could fix all the potholes. That's what's going on, but it's happening at a provincial level. And we feel nervous about it because we've lost that service in the past. You know, but I think that's just a political reality of a public service that one party or two parties can make some hay on and score some points and get in the media.
That's exactly what it is.
The... Right. Right. It's those, you know, those kind of comparisons are, you know, things people are talking about. So the one aspect of this that I think is, is a bit concerning, and it is the, maybe if you're gonna carry a message about this, is keeping the story and doubt, risk, risk of change and doubt about the future is bad for private investment. And so, you know, Mark Rodd and his company putting money into the colony, reopening that, that is a leap of faith. And he's got a contract, he's got a contract he's counting on. But I suspect he's also betting a bit on the future beyond that contract. And so when you have other operators, other people looking at investing in either tourism experiences or in infrastructure, for them to hear that there's some risk, that maybe there's a factor that they haven't considered, they don't know, a variable, that they don't know what the outcome is, it might make them think twice. It might make their investors and lenders think twice. I think that is the, that is the true cost today of that narrative that we're hearing. And I don't think you're gonna shut that down with numbers, with all due respect. I think you'll shut that down by allowing it to be today's news and yesterday's story. But I'm, you know, again, I'm not a, an expert in political strategy. I'm just suggesting to you that what my perspective is on that.
I'm tired too. I'd much rather be doing, you know, Music Week and all the other things that we were tasked with doing than trying to justify our existence, so...
Yeah. So are we good? Okay, all right. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you, very much.
Okay, staff reports, CAO reports. Is there anything for the CAO in there that anyone wants to? Good? Okay, fire department? Anything for the chief? Okay, thanks, chief. Operational services? Usually questions here.
First of all, show of passion.
Yep.
What's that? Our problems.
Go ahead, Jim.
I just want, I just simply wanted to thank Chad and his staff. They've done a marvelous job with the sidewalks. I'm an expert on sidewalks, as you all know. So with the right salting in the dirt and the plowing after that storm, recent storm in March. So thank Chad and staff. I see the boys, I see the boys on a regular basis and thank them. Thank you.
Good, CAO?
Your worship, I was, I was half joking about the potholes, but only half. Uh, you know, I think, uh, our communications, uh, person and, and Chad's people did a nice job in terms of putting out some information about how we address potholes with the, the equipment we have and, and how we're able to get out, you know, during, during the winter season and make, make, uh, good repairs. So, uh, you know, if people haven't been around the province to, to experience the, the degree to which roads have been affected by this past winter and the potholes that other places are experiencing, they might, they might run across one in town and think, "Gosh, this is, this is too bad." But really, I think our, our guys have done a, done a great job in, in advising council in the past to purchase equipment to allow us to get out and, and do some work and mitigate against, uh, that seasonal nuisance. But Chad may have something to say.
Yeah, no, um, and we, we're getting a lot of reports, uh, through C Click Fix, so, uh, we just wanna urge the public when they're using, um, using that avenue to report pothole locations that we want as much detail as we can as to size and location.
So, you're getting, have you got more in the last couple of weeks on that?
Yes. More complaints through C Click Fix? Quite a few, yeah, yeah, since, uh, since Mike put out, uh.
Mike did that. Yeah. So, yeah, so we're going to try to keep putting information out there. I think folks don't understand, um, how things work, including the fact that I keep saying over and over, if, if you, you know, if you're a taxpayer in town, you're paying for a hundred percent of this. There's just not enough money to keep up with, with paving everything and it, there's just not enough money to make the roads perfect.
Yeah.
Unless you live outside of the.
Some of the complaints we're getting are about specific potholes. Uh, the complaints are about the general condition of a, you know, a
Yeah.
block of street. So, I mean, items like that, we need to assess in the spring for short and long-term maintenance needs.
So, I think we're gonna do another story on that, Mike. But, you know, helping people understand, you know, the different pots of money and that.
Yeah.
When we, um, for the most part, I stand corrected, but when we pave a street, we can't just pave it. You have to dig up that old infrastructure and, and because it's so old, there's no sense in,
Yeah.
you know, paving over something that has to be dug up. So, it ends up being millions of dollars instead of thousands. So,
Yeah.
all those things. It's just helpful for the public to understand. It makes a difference.
Yep.
Yep. Are you, oh, sorry, Jim?
I was just interested, Chad, uh, I, under parks and facilities, I see where we started looking at the clocks in this, in this building.
Yeah, um, and, uh, I, the clocks have never worked consistently well in the past. So, um, Todd's reached out to a, a contractor who's made some repairs in the past. So, each clock is, is run, um, on a separate motor. So, the suggestion to us is that maybe all three motors need to be replaced, but Todd's done some inspection and it looks like the armature, the arms are, uh, actually rubbing on the inside of the lens. Um, so that might require some work.
If we ever get them working, it'd be neat to have, uh, have them lit so that we could see them, uh, in the evening. You know, with the, it'd be, you know, like a nice look, a nice feature.
Yep.
And, um, and I'm happy to see an increase in the ridership on the bus.
Yeah, it's pretty promising. We've only got two months' worth of data for this year, but.
I noticed that there's, uh, last couple of days, there, there's a squeaky sound coming over the bus when it, when it drives, goes by me. So, I hope there's nothing seriously wrong with it.
Yeah, I think it's just salt and sand in the, in the chassis, yeah.
Thanks very much, Chad.
Good. Cliff?
So, the hands are binding on the lens?
We think, yeah. We think.
Why don't you just cut a little bit off the ends of them?
Yeah, but the, the hands can't be, um, a, a, assessed or, um, we can't get to them from the inside, so the lenses have to be removed from the inside. Or we could go digital.
I got a Westminster, I got a Westminster China antique clock. I paid four hundred. I got a mantel clock. I, and, and it was just a thing I kept. My dad had it. Anyway, it wasn't going for a long time. And I got a guy to repair it. It was four hundred and fifty dollars. This was about three years ago. And that damn thing now, I have to wind it every day. I used to be get, get a week out of it. I think he bought the darn, uh, the, the movement from China or someplace. I don't know. I don't wanna say bad about China. They might do something to me. In a foreign country.
Thoughts are getting better.
I'm not, I'm glad I'm not selling canola oil, but we sell lobster. That'll be the next hit, uh.
And he lapses.
Enough of that.
I love ya.
Uh, Chad, is the frost out of the ground yet?
Uh, no, we're still, we're still seeing frost.
I had something stuck in the ground that I put in in the fall and I was just able to get it out yesterday. So, people need to understand that patching on a permanent basis doesn't function very well before the frost comes out of the ground.
That's right.
It's, it's, you put the patch in, you're pretty much gonna have to take it out again, redo it. So, um, but I did, had, there was one complaint about, uh, Cumberland Street and I went down, uh, it might've been a little overstated. I was able to drive my car through it. Somebody said you couldn't. But the Cumberland Street's in terrible condition. I drove down the rest of the street and I was.
Yeah, and Cumberland's seen a lot of activity since the.
I'll leave it there, but, you know, there's two sections to Cumberland Street. There's the east section past William and then the, the piece down to Main Street. And the piece down to Main Street is pretty hard.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Good? Thanks, Chad.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Planning Department? Okay, uh, Asset Management and Infrastructure Renewal, Renewal Report.
That's what you say, is it? Well, that, that conversation was a good segue into what I wanted to talk to you guys about today. I will just beg for a minute, if you're telling me to get set up here.
Charles, sorry, we'll do the presentation at the end.
Okay.
Yeah, so just a report for now.
Perfect. All right. We'll just wait till.
So, go ahead. Go ahead, Charles.
Sorry? Um, so, did, I didn't, uh, actually attach a report this week. So, um, if anyone had any questions about some of the ongoing activity, I'd be happy to field those questions. While, while we're just waiting, I'll give a quick, uh, update on the, the Gleeb Street parking garage. So, we received a concept, another set of concept drawings for the parking garage a few weeks ago, um, maybe about a week and a half ago. And the designer is, is not really reconciling what, what the town is looking for, um, for functionality with, um, some of their own ideas. So, we're just trying, we're just, we've got a bit of a back and forth with them right now, just trying to get what we want. Um, so we're hoping that the next, uh, council meeting will have a package for you guys to take a look at, given the, the recent input.
Okay, no questions for Charles. We'll move along. Thank you. Uh, Finance Department report?
Just quickly, uh, wanted to mention the, uh, Finance Department's gone through an HST audit. Um, we're working on the results of that right now. We've gotten some preliminary, uh, I guess, results back from them about some issues that we've come up against. We've since dug into those a little bit deeper for them, sent information back. Uh, but I'll have more on that in the coming weeks. Um, auditors are back in the office looking at our year-end, which was on the weekend. And as far as that goes, uh, we'll continue to, to work with them. Things are good right now. Uh, you'll see when you go through your budget package, there's a lot of work to do on the year-end. And I'll just defer more comments until eight, B and C come up, which is dealing with capital and operational budgets.
Okay, so Recreation. Frank?
I request a patch. Any questions or, I spent the last day and a half with the mayor. I'm gonna vote or assist in these projects.
Oh, my gosh. It, it was, I have to say, some of the best twenty-four hours I've ever spent. It was, um, we did the provincial volunteer banquet, but we always take our volunteers out for, uh, dinner before. We have breakfast together in the morning. Um, we went out for supper and Patrick Ross stopped by the table to say hi to Frank. So, life was good there. And I, I would say our town volunteer, Cohen, I think everybody knows Cohen, Kenny, he was so excited. And he was really, he was over the, like, it brought me to tears probably ten times in the twenty-four hours. Got to, got to meet the premier and I'm, I'm gonna go up and make the introduction. And before I get there, Cohen's walked up to him to say hello. And it di, it just did my heart, it just did my heart good. So, we, we got nice photos, um, during the reception, which was at the casino. It, it was lovely. They had the, I can't remember the group. They're an Indian group. But what's the name of that? They're, they're pretty well-known. They're from India.
They're coming, and they're coming to Yarmouth.
Yes.
Um, there's a entertainment group, uh, Bangra, Sha, Sha, Shagra.
That's it.
And they're coming, uh, to Yarmouth as part of the hospital gala.
Yes.
So, they were, they were the ending of the ceremony and.
And they, they asked people to go up on stage and our illustrious recreation leader. And we have it on video and, and Cohen went up as well.
With the premier.
Yes, and the premier went up.
And Jeff Little, our municipal volunteer.
Yes, Jeff Little was the municipal one. And actually, to that point, uh, Jeff Little is the municipality's volunteer. But the entire Little family was the provincial family volunteer winners. It, it was just, it, I don't think it could've been better.
Yarmouth was well-represented.
Oh, my goodness, yes. Yes.
So, I'm hoping that all councilors can be present, uh, next week, Tuesday night, right here, Town Hall, six-thirty, for the local volunteer reception where we'll re-present Cohen's and the Little's awards to them here Tuesday night.
Yeah. Good stuff. Thank you, Frank. Any questions for Frank? Good? Yeah, we would've had a, an invitation in the emails. Economic Development Report. Madely's not here, but there's lots going on there. Okay, next thing. Terms of Reference, Doctor Recruitment. Go ahead, CAO. I read that, but I don't see it.
Your worship, the, um, the three councils of, uh, of Yarmouth County have reactivated a doctor recruitment committee after a couple of years of, of not having one. Uh, the reason we didn't have one, uh, or weren't active with it is that changes in, in the delivery of healthcare provincially, uh, and specifically in the area of doctor recruitment really changed the degree to which we could be directly involved. So, given the, the importance of the issue of, of having enough doctors to provide care in our, in our region, uh, the committee's been, been reestablished. Uh, the committee has drafted a terms of reference that they're asking the three councils to, to approve, and that's what's attached to your agenda today.
Go ahead, Jim.
So, I see where, uh, Councilor Deputy Mayor Phil made a motion to bring back the revised terms of reference to our, to this council for approval. That's all you need for a motion? So moved.
Moved and seconded. So, there's just a, I don't wanna say typos, but I'm just gonna change a couple of things before I give it back to you. Okay? Yeah. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, folks. Capital Budget.
So, I've passed out, uh, a few binders. Um, so if you want to open up the binder, I believe it's in tab six is the proposed capital budget. Again, as in past years with both capital and operations budgets, I've asked the department heads to submit, uh, requests and, and information on what needs to be done in the current year. Um, all that was brought forward and put into our, our plan. And then it was, uh, basically reviewed with, uh, with our CAO and our town engineer to go through what can get done this year. Uh, you'll see there on, uh, on the capital budget, I've summarized it down into, to one page. We've, uh, did a little bit of reconciliations, uh, over the past number of years where we have multiple projects that tend to fall through more than one fiscal year. So, tracking them has been, um, a little more challenging. Uh, but, so I think, uh, speaking on behalf of the engineer as well, this is kind of the plan where we have, uh, in the current, in the current year, um, which is the plan for nineteen-twenty, um, you'll see, I guess, uh, items in there that we've already sort of committed to. So, it didn't leave us a whole lot of, uh, room for, uh, things we wanted to do on top of those. Uh, so if you're all open to that first, that page, it's summarized there, uh, you'll see projects listed there. Uh, projects one right through to basically eighteen or seventeen. Those, uh, you'll see a prior year's net balance. Those amounts are budgets that have been approved in prior years and some spending has happened on some of those. Other projects, the funding was done and, and, uh, they've just not happened yet. So, uh, we still have that money to operate with and those items on our list of things to do. Uh, when you get down to number eighteen, down to number thirty-eight, uh, those are the items that we have in the current year plan. So, additional monies, uh, to approve for the current year. Uh, in there, you'll see things, um, the first, the first number down to, uh, number twenty-four. Those are items that we've actually spent more than what was probably pre-approved in prior years. So, we need to fund those, uh, over expenditures. And after that, you'll get into things like the ferry terminal, Parade Gleeb Street, uh, some solar energy projects that we've talked about in the past and we believe council wishes to proceed with. And so, those numbers are in there. After that, uh, we've gotten into some capital items, uh, or equipment purchases. A lot of our capital plan right now depends on, uh, what might happen with the Parade Gleeb Street project. Uh, that and you'll see monies in there for that along with, uh, bump oats along Main Street, which are gonna be brought in and done in conjunction with that, that, uh, work. So, you know, it may come to a point where if, if the funding is not in there to do that, we might come back with, basically some options or some changes to our capital plan. Those are, because a lot of money is tied up in the, uh, in that project. I don't know if you want me to read through those or not, but they're there. They're all things that we've talked about. I will mention just at the bottom of the page how, uh, we're proposing or we're looking to fund those amounts. So, you'll see a total of just over four million dollars, um, looking to be put into our plan and spent this coming, coming year. Uh, we are funding our depreciation in our operational budget to the tune of two million dollars. So, we'll have that money to use. Um, I think on everyone's sheets, there's, you may notice some of the amounts are highlighted in a gray in the plans. Uh, those gray amounts are areas or projects that we can, uh, apply to use gas tax for. And we do have gas tax, uh, some unspent and some new money. So, in the current year, it'd be about one point three million of gas tax that could be used.
That's all, that just, that reverts back next year to the six hundred and something thousand, right? We only get that extra for a year.
Yes, but we have unspent gas tax in a reserve right now. So, we have the one point three million today without the extra bump to spend.
Oh, without the?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Okay.
And then in those projects, there would be, uh, roughly seven hundred thousand. That would be attributed to water, uh, water projects. And so, the water utility would, would, uh, basically pay the town for that amount. So, we're looking at, uh, a plan of roughly four million dollars for the current year.
Jeff and Charles, so the number twenty-five, the Parade Glebe Stone Sewer Separation School to Water, is that project maybe not gonna go this year, or, or, I'm not sure if I'm understanding. I thought that we, at one point, were gonna do the sewer and water infrastructure upgrade from Pre, along Parade Street towards Main and Glebe and...
Okay.
That, that's the plan. I guess I'll speak while I have the mic. That's the plan, and application's been put into the different levels of government for, for funding for that project.
Okay.
Of course, if the funding doesn't come through, it'll change the, the scale and what we can do on our own. The numbers there are, that we've put in would be our share of the bigger project.
I, I understand that. Okay, thank you.
Cliff.
So in the fire budget, we're at two, two-five-five-three-nine-six expenditures. Where are the revenue items, the sharing that we get from the municipality? Where does that show up here? I can't find it, but...
He's in the operations?
How do we, how do we, do we have that under a grant, or it wouldn't be a grant?
Yeah, I can get, I'll get to that. Right now, we're just dealing with...
So we're in the capital budget now, and then he's gonna do the operations, right?
Yes.
Cliff's in the operations now.
Yep.
I'm looking at town income and expense sum. Oh, you're not...
We're just dealing with the capital budget right now.
What the heck's matter with you?
We're just in, it's all right.
We haven't caught up to you yet.
I passed through all that stuff.
Yeah, we're, we're in, we're in number six right now.
Okay.
Right? That's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any, is there anything else under the, this number-six tab that anybody wants to ask you? And I gotta, I'm gonna say it, like I say it every year for six years. I need to, I, I just need to digest it.
Yeah, and that's fair for today. This isn't, this is our plan. You guys can think it over.
So I'll pick one up. Sorry, go ahead. So the fire hall washroom renovations, is that something, is that a code? Is that a to-meek code item, or is it something just to modernize? What, what, are we being driven to do that by some regulatory agency, or are we just doing it to make it nicer?
We don't have occupancy on the second floor, counselor. We don't have occupancy on the second floor. We can't, we can't occupy the second floor of the fire hall.
So are the renovations or...
Yeah.
So, so the, the upstairs community hall at the Fire Department was closed several years ago because of several deficiencies. We have been budgeting to correct those deficiencies over the years. The issue with the washrooms is they don't meet today's standard, and because it was closed, they need to be upgraded and significant, so it is, it is a code issue, to answer your question.
I'm done.
Are you good?
Yeah.
Now, I, yeah, and I will after I look, like I...
So, your worship, this is the first time that you folks have seen this, this document, which is an update from last year's capital budget. And so I encourage you to take it away, study it, and bring questions to the Director of Finance, to myself, to the engineer, and so on. Make yourself comfortable, get your questions answered, bring them back to the May Committee of the whole meeting, and at your, at your pleasure, when you're comfortable to approve the, the capital budget, then, then we'll do that. So our, the next piece is the operating budget. We try to do the capital budget ahead of the operating budget, they're, they're kind of linking together this year, so Jerry will talk about the oper, operational budget. And again, same thing, this is your first look at it. Get your, get some questions answered today, go away, have a closer look, ask your questions of Director, myself, bring them to the next committee of the whole meeting. And if you wish to have a, a sooner committee of the whole meeting, which we haven't discussed, your worship, we could schedule a special budget meeting to sit and look at these two documents in, in more detail after you've had a chance to, to have a look through them and, and come up with some questions. And then, you know, we can, we can move forward towards approval. We would like to have both budgets at the May Council meeting would be our target, to try and get them approved. But that being said, they're your, they're your plan, they're your, it's your decision, and until you're comfortable to, to make the motion and to approve the documents, then we continue, will continue to meet and, and answer questions and make adjustments.
I see a one, two, three, four, five, six is the capital, seven is blank. Did I miss something? Or did you just decide to jump to eight?
Just jumped to eight.
Really?
Yeah.
May I ask why?
Eight's the budget presentation that Jeff would normally do on a PowerPoint.
Okay.
So I, today's, today I just wanna get a lot of information in front of you, so you can take it away and digest it. We haven't had a chance to meet just directly or separate meeting on the budget, so what we decided to do is put Jeff's presentation in as well, and just strictly to kind of separate the, the three sections. The first four are about an operational budget, the sixth is the capital budget, and eight is that presentation that we would normally do through PowerPoint.
Thank you for the look.
The, the little tabs that we buy come from one to, come in one to ten, so I've used them.
Okay, so, all right, so the operational, which tab?
Yeah, so let's just start with tab one.
Okay.
Again, the operational budget, there's a lot of, a lot of numbers here to go through if, if you choose, but today I wanna just get it in front of you, and I'll talk to you on the high-level report. So the budget, I guess, just a couple of quick comments before I go through those notes. It is a budget. There's been a lot going on, but the budget is really a, kind of a continue-to-do-business-as-we've-been-doing budget. I did get the information back and request back from all the different managers. We've put those into our budget, reviewed all the staffing positions, there's been some changes there, reviewed our insurance, tenders amounts, got the new program in there. What's not in here, what I don't have up-to-date information on, is some of the provincial numbers. They typically come out in the first week of April, so I know last year I got the emails on April fifth or fourth, something like that. So in the next few days, I might get a little bit of changes to what we might play, pay for housing, those types, housing, education, those numbers. So this current presentation that we have, I have all the numbers in from last year. So we've taken everybody's requests, put them through, done a little bit of negotiation, I guess, with some managers on some of the ideas, but generally, everything's in here that we're looking at and that the managers are looking to do. So just reading through the budget notes, tax assessments are up a little bit. We'll have an increase of just under a hundred thousand dollars in budgeted revenue from that. This budget has, is assuming the same tax rates as last year. I mentioned, we now have two million dollars in our operational budget to work with capital. That's up by a hundred thousand from last year because our debt, one of our loans has been paid off in full in the year that just ended, so that frees up the hundred thousand dollar principal payments. So between our principal payments and our actual transfers to reserves for the, for the capital fund, that equates to what our depreciation would be. So even though the, the loan is paid off, there's a hundred thousand dollar saving there, that money is really what we would be using for the capital fund, so we made that adjustment or change. So debt repayment down a hundred, but the capital fund up a hundred. And then, in doing this, as I just explained with the capital budget, how we plan on funding those, that four million dollars in projects, would not be any, any debt taken off of those capital projects. We've assumed same rates for sewer, same rates for garbage, same rates for compost. The dis, the fire dispatch adjustments were made on the revenue expense side. We have a new budget line for our tax, our tax phase-in agreement, the rebates. So everyone's quite aware of that. We made our first payment in the current year to our first, first recipient, and so we've got a budget of, I put in fifteen thousand in rebates for next year, so I would just, I'm looking at, we can't say for sure, but the, the request has to come, and the trigger comes from the application or applicant. So I'm not sure who will actually trigger that, but I would have to think that two or three will be triggered for next year. So looking at probably around fifteen thousand dollars in rebates next year. So that's a new line. The RCMP contract seemed, I think we were fully staffed in the past year, so I thought it was prudent to increase that RCMP contract budget by a hundred and four thousand, which will keep us in range, I guess. I'm not sure that'll be the full amount, but it should keep us closer to what our actuals will be. In our budget, like I say, we've gone through, I've gone through the staffing, payroll budgets with our, with Jody and HR, made sure that everybody was accounted for, and all the numbers are up to date with cost of living, those types of things. So have our communications and director and a second engineer. So staffing, benefits increases, those types of things are all in this budget. School expenses for the old schools are still included, still have the high school for the first part of the year in the budget. Hopefully this year, things will work out on that, that deal. The facade programs, got a seventy-five thousand dollar budget included, or seventy-five thousand dollar grant included in this budget, and the YMCA funding is at fifty-five thousand, as, as in previous years, in this budget. Page two is just a summary of our assessments, where they are for the current year. You'll see that, in that, the one number that some people are interested in is the cap assessment, cap assessment difference of two-point-eight million on the residential side. Again, one of the, one of the, it just, it sounds like a big number, but it's, it's not when you look out, the difference between market and cap values across the province. We're probably the closest in that range.
Yeah.
Question?
No, as Jeff was just saying, it's one percent.
One percent.
So we are, tell me if I'm right on this, or close, we, we are the lowest affected in the province by the cap.
That's right. The third page in this section is a summary that we started last year. Lindsay, in her, in her tax role, helps me, helps us with this. And what I'm trying to do is explain the difference from our taxable assessment in the prior year to where we are in the current year. It's not just a straight one percent increase or a two percent decrease, there's things that happened in the year on assessments. So we look at what's, what new constructions brought in, any decrease in assessments. As you know, assessments change based on sales. Houses or buildings that are torn down, those affect our assessments. Classification change, we do get things that are commercial that get switched to partial residential or residential part to commercial, so we try to, try to isolate those. And then, everything else that's not obvious to us when we review the files, we have to assume is an overall change by the assessments office, which sometimes they go through and say, you know, this, this section of town overall is increased by a certain small percentage or decreased by a certain small percentage. So we look at all the big changes and any assessment accounts, and so all like three thousand accounts, and then we just kind of look at everything that really doesn't change much at all, we will assume as a regular market assessment change. So, so in the end, you'll see that residential was up by two-point-two-nine percent and commercial was up by point-four percent. So I, in there, I looked at our tax rates, where our tax dollars are. If you look over the total, you'll see a hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars in increased assessment, but we allow for appeals in our budget. So that's the little piece that we kind of estimate on how many commercial residential accounts will be appealed, and generally, when they're appealed, they're lowered. So we allow for that. So the assessments that you have on the two thousand and nineteen taxable assessments, those are the assessments that we get in December. So right between December and today, there's been appeals and assessments going down. So in our budget, we allow for that. And just a quick note, I just showed the one cent on, on the tax rate equates to a total of forty-one thousand dollars, forty-one-seven, if you, if we had a one cent change in any residential commercial rates. The fourth page is kind of a long history of summary of what our tax rates have been over the years.
Hold on, Jer. Hang on one second.
Yep.
So on, I did notice one thing, your expense item in, in tab three there. We went from seven-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-four on administration and general government to eight-hundred-and-fifty-three-two-one-zero. I'd like to have an answer to that question. It's over ten percent increase in that item.
So he's, you're in tab three now?
Yeah, he just left.
No, we're in tab one.
Oh, sorry, that was...
But that's okay, if you want.
I can't catch up with you.
You did, just, just tab one, we're just going over the...
The teacher always slapped my hands because I started at the back and came to the front in the book.
So can you answer that question?
The ruler, bam.
Jerry, you okay to answer that question now?
Sure, if you like.
In tab three?
Okay.
I just wanna focus, focus on...
It's all right. It's all good.
So what's the line that, a question in there?
I'm sorry to interrupt. I thought, I thought we were on tab three, not page three.
Oh, okay.
That's...
All right.
I apologize.
Gotcha. So we'll get to that.
We'll go to tab, tab three.
Okay, keep going then.
So on, on page four, in the, I guess we're in tab one right now, that's a summary of just all the tax changes that we've made over the years, just a little history.
Tab one, page four. Okay, go ahead, Jer.
So that's just a history of where the tax rates have been, just nothing more than that, and a summary of why the changes were made. There's been some, some things happen over the years where BO has been eliminated, and then we changed our sewer rates and reduced taxes on those. So that's just a summary of where we, what we've done over the last ten years or so.
Have we gotten this before?
What's that?
Have we gotten this page before?
We got it last year.
Yeah, I think I had it in last year's.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's really neat.
So it's just, yeah, information. And one thing I do look at when I do the budgets, and on page five there is, are the organics and garbage, and are they paying for themselves? And you can see that because one of the things we do look at is whether those rates should change. Obviously, in the current year, the way the current budget is set, organics and garbage seem to be okay. You'll see in the organics, a decrease in the budgeted revenue, and that one, kind of going through our year-end numbers, was looking at that and trying to figure out why. So actually talked to the manager at the Waste Park and one of our haulers, and the big change there was the amount of lobster going out to our compost facility this year as opposed to last year. Last year, there was a high death rate when they were, when they were held, and the dead lobster get trucked off to the compost facility, and it actually made five or six thousand dollars a month difference for about three or four months in a row.
Wow.
So...
That's shocking.
Not shocking, it's just reality.
But, but it's, when you think...
It's fall months, and they had a lot less, in that fishery in Area Thirty-Five, they had a lot less soft lobsters.
Where, where's Thirty-Five, Cliff?
From Digby on up into Bay of London, across the Alamo.
Okay, because we're Thirty-Three, Thirty-Four here.
That opens, that opens fifteenth of October, so CAO asked me to do some checking yesterday. I did some quick checking, and the answer is, it's just a natural fluctuation in the market, and...
Wow.
And, and it may be altogether different next year.
But a number... But a number on a page like this.
Yeah.
Just reflects how huge that.
Well, the good news is, the good news is, there were fewer, a lot fewer, soft and unmarketable and dead lobsters. Three to four percent deads, which are definitely going to the landfill. But, the, you know, they were running forty percent on soft lobsters going to the canners in that fishery, and they were down this year below thirty percent. So, that's, that's where it's coming from.
That's really interesting. Wow, okay, go ahead, Jerry, sorry. You would never think that, that, that would create that much difference, but it's good to know. Okay, where are we now?
So, that's just the final page of the notes on tab one. So, on tab two is just the high level, one pager of our current status on the budget. You'll see the first column, the nineteen-twenty budget. Second column is the budget for last year, that just ended on the weekend. And the right-hand side is, it looks, it looks big on the bottom line, but it's our actuals prior to all of our capital being moved out and prior to any audit, kind of things we have to do. So, there's still a lot of work for the accounting department to do with that number, and I will guarantee that the bottom line of three ninety-three won't be there in a couple of weeks' time.
Of course. We're used to three dollars and ninety-three cents maybe, but not three.
Yeah, no, there's, there's a lot to happen in our year-end yet.
Okay.
But you'll see in, in the current budget, that's in front of you, and in this package for nineteen-twenty shows a deficit of thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars. So, we need to deal with that, which is, when, when I went through it, I was relieved because I was used to seeing numbers in the hundreds of thousands of range that Jeff and I would deal with before we got to a budget that we would bring to you. So, this is kind of an all-in, a little bit of, little bit of negotiation with the department heads, but not a lot, and a lot of work to be done in the budget. And we're sitting with an issue of thirty-nine thousand dollars, which I thought was pretty good for our first run-through.
Go ahead, Cliff, you're on.
Yeah, I'm on the right page this time.
And, and you're late time.
So.
It is on.
Yeah, you're good.
So, in the two thousand eighteen, nineteen, your actuals were three ninety-three surplus. What were our budgeted numbers for a surplus?
Our budget for the, for that is, in the middle column, two thousand four hundred and thirty. But you'll see some large variances on things that are.
Yeah, okay.
In that, so our, our year-end, our actual numbers will change a fair bit through the expense side, a little bit on the revenue side, too.
So, we budgeted last year two four three oh, two thousand four hundred and thirty.
Yes.
And our actuals revealed that at the end of the year, we managed three ninety-three.
The actual today is three ninety-three, but that's, it's not complete yet.
That's not the year-end?
That's.
Are we March thirty-first year-end?
It's a March thirty-first year-end, but there's a lot of outstanding invoices that aren't paid yet, that would be March invoices.
Okay.
And then, we have to do our audit, regular year-end entries with like payroll accruals and, a lot, a lot of work gets done, and that will get eaten up pretty quickly.
Good, Cliff, you good? All right, Jerry, so I'm on tab two.
So, tabs three and four are just more detail of, of the summary in tab two. So, tab, tab three is probably where you can get into some questions.
Yeah.
I'm not, if you have any today, or if you want it, like I said, today's, what we wanted to do was just get it in front of you, so you can go through it.
Yeah. So, I think Cliff's question was on.
I think you're good.
So, you're good on that?
I don't.
No, but I mean, you've got, you've got your answer, okay, good.
We budgeted for it last year, but we didn't do the higher.
All right.
So, again, these, these next two tabs are just more details of the summary.
Three, three and four, right? Okay, so on these, if anybody has any questions now, Jerry's here, but I would, I'd encourage everybody to take a look and just bring the questions to Jerry or Jeff.
Yeah, really reiterate that, just take, take your time, go through it for the next little while. Any questions, certainly for Lamont and myself or Jeff? If I have questions from any one of you, I'll send the response back to all of you, so you all have the same information for the same questions, so.
That quickly, obviously, you picked up a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars on that one, that is part of what's in that three hundred and ninety thousand dollar surplus, I would assume.
A hundred and twenty from?
Well, I, I did some numbers here, it looks like you budgeted about a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars more under administration and general government, and it looks like you didn't spend it, and it's going to be spent in the coming year. So, that would have been left in last year's budget, the difference, which was my calculation, I think it's a hundred and twenty-one thousand there, but.
Yeah, if you're, if you're.
So, that, that would be part of your surplus of three ninety.
Part of the surplus.
Good, thanks, very much.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Jerry.
So, I think, right now, I mean, I don't really have a whole lot more to say. A couple of ideas, Jeff and I have talked about ways to get around this. I know that, you know, a one cent increase would take care of that thirty-nine thousand, that's by coincidence only, it wasn't planned that way. I was surprised to only have that kind of deficit with our kind of all-in budget. Like I say, we've gone through, I've gone through it pretty, pretty closely and worked with the directors, and we haven't, you know, tweaked it a whole lot, but, you know, to come up with basically forty to fifty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollar change is kind of what we're looking to do, to end up with a, you know, a ten thousand dollar surplus kind of as a minimum. I know there's things that we could do in different areas that are small, but I could probably find ten or fifteen, two and three thousand dollar items here, there, the other way, some on the revenue side, some on the expense side. And then, there's, you know, the whole thing with what we have in our, we do have twenty thousand dollars for community events in the current year. There's seventy-five thousand dollars for the facade program, which, you know, was near and dear.
Seventy-five for what?
For the facade program.
Oh, facade, I thought you said.
So, there are, there are areas in our budget that we can figure out how to deal with the, I, I'm using a fifty thousand dollar number because you do want to have a bit of a surplus at the end of the year.
If you have.
So, there's really, there's really two options. One is to raise the revenues, you know, or to figure out within the budget, a lot of small items that we can just tweak.
If you have a three hundred and ninety thousand dollar surplus and you have to make adjustments, do you anticipate there's going to be, I would, you still going to come out in the surplus?
I did quick calculations, and I'm hoping to, yeah, be in like the fifty range.
I mean, you got a gift of a hundred and twenty-one there.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
So, seems to me you could find the thirty-something right in there, couldn't you?
Well, our.
What do you do with your surpluses at the end of the year if you have one?
Surplus, it's have to go into reserve.
Just goes to reserve, can't be what, all right, okay.
Yeah, through the municipal government act now, they go into reserves, and then, and then we get one of our fiscal condition indexes, look at our, our reserves, and rate us on it.
You can't roll it, roll it ahead.
No, you'd have to actually, in, in the budget, say, taking money out of reserve as a, as a revenue line. Yeah.
Good. Go ahead there, Jim.
Jerry and Jeff, remind me of our, with regard to a budget surplus, of our financial condition indicators. I'm concerned that we don't look good sometimes with, with our province, and so, I think it's important to have a budget surplus or plan for a positive, have something, you can't budget with, for zero, and.
You can't budget a deficit.
I don't want to budget a deficit, that's for sure.
Right.
We're not allowed to.
But whether your surplus is two thousand, or I've seen other municipal units across the province with, you know, budget surpluses of a couple hundred thousand, that's up to council. So, it's quite easy not to have deficits if you're budgeting a two hundred thousand dollar surplus and come up short. When you're budgeting a two thousand dollar surplus and come up short, you're typically in a deficit spot.
Well, we, we had a deficit one year, right?
We've had a couple deficits in the last five years.
Yeah, which gave us a red mark, which.
Yeah.
Wasn't happy about, but, anyway, and we're not likely to know the year-end position before we set the budget.
No, no, I mean, I'll know a lot more in the next couple of weeks on our year-end, but.
But we gotta, we have to set the rate, or confirm the rate, I should say, in our May meeting, right? And, so, anyway, I was, I may have, I'm probably going to come and sit with you for a little bit now and then, Jerry.
Sure.
So, thank you very much.
So, I, so I just want to throw this out there, to Jim's point about the, the deficit and, and the, the red marks. If, if we didn't put a couple million dollars into funding our depreciation, we wouldn't have those deficits. So, if we, if we weren't doing the right thing, because we're doing the right thing, it appears that we're not, right? And, and so, and, and I admit, and Jeff knows this, that's, it's just a really big bone of contention with the province for me on, on that piece, because we're doing the right thing, and because everybody else doesn't, we are judged.
I just don't listen to that.
Yeah, it's, but you're absolutely right, you're absolutely right. It's, when you do the right thing and you're still advertised as, as not, it's, it's concerning. Go ahead.
So, so we do things differently, and I, I don't like to use the terms.
Right, you're wrong.
Right and wrong, right?
You're right.
We do things differently.
You're, you're different.
We are different, we are different in that we do fund our depreciation, which allows us to fund capital reinvestment without taking on debt. So, we have, I think Jerry's showing in the operating budget, two hundred thousand dollars for debt servicing.
Yeah.
So, that's how much of our annual tax levy goes into paying, paying on our debt. It's very, very little. Where other municipalities, that number might be significantly higher, right? And maybe they're sitting on large reserves, but they're not funding their depreciation. So, if they have a lot of capital assets, they may be digging themselves a hole, you know, differs from one circumstance to another. So, what we said to the province around, around our strategy is, we are holding our debt capacity for the unforeseen thing that may occur in the past, and we have the ability, one year to the next, to, to abandon funding depreciation if we needed a couple million dollars in our operating side. So, we feel, you know, Jerry and I feel that we're, we're giving council advice on financial policy here that allows you to, to look after the future, but also be nimble enough in the near term to deal with anything that may come up that, that comes out of left field. So, we feel we're in a very good position. We've explained that, that strategy or that approach to the province, and, and they've said, just keep us up to date. So, I think we're, we're, we're doing some good things, but they're not being done in the same way that a lot of other municipalities do them.
Yeah. So, I, and I, I should take my words from what you just said, because you're right, it's not right or wrong, it's just different from, but it's a good thing that we're doing, very, very good thing. Jim?
One more question, Jerry, on three page, the first page after the tab three. What's, what is the detail on special assessment? There's assessable property, ten million plus, and then there's special assessment, one point nine. Is that, tab three, first, the first page?
Yep, so, you can dig into more details, under tab four, those numbers just flow through, so.
Okay.
You'll see special assessments in here, and basically, it's the sewer rate and the garbage collection make up those numbers.
That's, I hadn't got there yet, thank you. Thanks, your worship.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment as to Council McLeod as well, that in Jeff's presentation, which is back in tab eight, you, much you skip over blank number seven. In there, there's a couple pages around the FCI stats. So, again, we just wanted to, Jeff didn't get a chance to do that presentation this year, so we put a hard copy in this binder for you. Okay.
Okay, so you, are you good?
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine.
All right, so we will, if anyone has questions.
For sure.
Good to go.
Direct them my way, and I'll put answers out to all council.
Perfect. Thank you, Jerry. Good stuff. Okay, we are on capital operating utility vehicle tender.
Okay, your worship, in your package there, there's a memo from the fire chief to myself concerning a fire department utility vehicle recommendation, and for those of you who may not know fire jargon, that's a pickup truck. So, we received two submissions for the utility vehicle tender, a submission from Pache Motors of Falmouth, Nova Scotia, and a submission from TriStar Industries of Yarmouth, Nova Scotia. After reviewing the submissions, using the published tender, the chief is recommending that you, that I submit to council, and I am so, that we enter into a contract with TriStar Industries to provide the tendered utility vehicle. They were the low bidder at seventy-two thousand, five hundred. Pache Motors was disqualified on the basis that their bid was not complete, it did not contain a bid bond, which under our policy leads to automatic disqualification of the bidder. So, this is for your consideration, I am recommending, so is the chief, that you award to TriStar Industries, and again, the amount there is seventy-two thousand, five hundred.
There's additional information. And that is that even if the Pache Motors bid had been considered, it was still higher than the amount TriStar tendered in any event. So, with that information at hand, your worship, I move a motion that we approve, approve the bid of TriStar Industry Limited on this topic.
Okay. Yeah, we recommend to council. So, moved and seconded? Questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried, thank you. RFD major recreation infrastructure project, human resource needs. Go ahead, CAO.
So, your worship, this is a follow-up, this is a request that is going to each of the three councils, and it's jointly recommended by the three CAOs, and that is that we allocate a budget of forty thousand dollars each towards the preparation of the, of the application for the major recreation infrastructure project, and to decode that for you, that is the Mariner Center expansion, indoor, outdoor, track, fieldhouse, and aquatic center. The reason for the money is that we expect that there will be a need for somebody to work dedicated on that application for a few months, and that there may be need to, to reach out to third parties for, for small bits of consulting. We do not expect that between now and June thirtieth that we'll spend that entire amount, but we also thought, you know, what if we had to come back, if something came up and we had to come back, we don't want to do a duplicate ask. So, this is a fairly modest amount from each of the councils in support of, of carrying out the work that needs to be done.
Good. Okay. Moved by Don.
So, just.
Go ahead, I just need a seconder. Thank you. Go ahead.
So, I have a question. So, it's the wording, each municipal unit invest up to forty thousand dollars for a total budget. I think most of us would understand that this means if, we're each putting up a third.
Yeah.
And, and there's no, so does that tie us into third sharing going down the road on other things in this project?
So, your worship, we have. So your worship, we have, uh, we have discussed, as was, uh, town council's original motion, that we would enter this, um, endeavor with an idea that the operational and the capital funding would be done on the basis of a formula that would include population, uniform assessment, and possibly other variables. At this point in the process, because we feel that the, the, um, uh, the timeline around getting the application done is so tight, uh, we have not completed the negotiation on exactly what the cost sharing will be, but when this was brought to the table and suggested as it, as it is here, that we made it clear, this is, this is, does not prejudice our position in terms of the funding, uh, formula for operation and capital that still needs to be hammered out. But this is a very small, uh, portion of the overall project, and we feel that by putting this forward for now, that, uh, that we'll get the ball rolling, and we will, once the application is, is either near complete or complete, that we'll hammer out those, those other details.
Good. Go ahead. No.
I was, um, just go ahead.
Okay.
About the, uh, need to, or has this gone through a revision maybe that I'm looking at now? Was there an earlier version of this? I'm looking for some language that I thought I saw that indicates that the committee, the group of nine, there, that's what I'm.
Steering committee.
Well, it was called the group of nine.
Yeah.
It's called the steering committee.
And, and it talked about, I think that you could infer from the language in what I was reading on that, with that, um, some indication that there's an obvious need to, uh, eventually align the management of the new facility with the obligations to fund it and so on and all the rest.
Yeah, so there, there was a request for decision at our last meeting that dealt with establishing the group of nine as the steering committee, and I believe the verbiage that you're, you're remembering was in that request for decision.
I was looking for it here, I was hoping it might be. So how come that language went out when we?
This, this decision is just about funding to carry out the, the application, to get the application in. All that other work that, uh, that the steering committee has to do is still on their plate to be done, including setting the vision, you know, with the councils for, for Mariner Center, uh, alignment of mission and mandate, uh, all of that. And in fact, you know, the, the questions that are out there around what are the detailed components of the aquatic center or the fieldhouse? Who's going to run the aquatic center? All that stuff is work to be done. This is, this is asking for some resources to begin the work.
But I think these are, the kind of questions I'm asking are critical at each stage, so that we stay on track with some of the things that we had as objectives going down the road, in terms of funding the actual capital and operational expenses.
Yeah. Agreed. Want to give Don Jim?
So, so. Yeah.
Oh, yes.
So I, I share the same concerns as Cliff. Do we do an advertising and look, looking for a person who will, or a company who will coordinate this project? And, and is there enough time to?
Go ahead.
So your worship, we talked about, uh, this very narrow window and how to best execute the work that needs to be done. If we had gone through a procurement process to, to hire a firm, you know, with, maybe, probably a Halifax firm to do this work for us, we would have burned all of the time we have to prepare the application just identifying the firm. And so we, we did identify that this could be somebody hired as an employee, which doesn't have the procurement, uh, act overseeing it, it is simply a hiring of a staff person for a very limited term job. And so we, we discussed that perhaps the district of Yarmouth could undertake that hiring on their payroll, uh, to hire that person just for a few months to do this work. Once we get past the funding application, having submitted that, you know, that phase of the work is done, and the committee has other work to do, but it's of a different nature. And so this is just to get us to that, to that point. And so because of the type timelines, we chose a different approach, but it is still a legitimate and fair, uh, way to approach the work.
So I'm, I've been, I'm, I'm going to be supporting, but I just wanted to figure out, understand, thank you.
All right, so. Okay, so motions on the floor? Questions called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried, thank you folks. RFD airport bridge funding.
Your worship, uh, where council tabled their motion concerning the withdrawal from the airport corporation until, uh, or tabled to the July council meeting, uh, there are ongoing operations that have to continue at the, uh, at the airport. Uh, the CAOs have discussed the situation and the lack of an agreement, uh, an intermunicipal agreement. We've disagreed to ask our councils for sixty days to, to work out that agreement. Uh, the presumed funding level would be six hundred eighty-five thousand, uh, and that we would divide them according to, divide, so two months' worth or sixty days' worth of that amount, divided by the cost-sharing formula that exists in the current, uh, intermunicipal agreement or the one that just lapsed. So we're asking to extend that, that agreement for sixty days essentially, and we would fund accordingly. And in the interim, or in the meantime, uh, the CAOs will work on, uh, revisions to the intermunicipal agreement to bring to the partners.
Okay, so that was my, that was my only question about the funding. It's sixty days' worth of what would have been. Okay. Okay, thank you. Moved and seconded? Go ahead, Cliff.
So where does the town sit in terms of representation at the present time on an alternate, alternate member on there? I'm not very inclined to continue in that role, given the town's.
Go ahead, CAO.
So, I mean, are we still going to participate in the meeting and that sort of thing?
We're, we're still where we were. We're still where we've, where we were last year. We're still owners. We're still in the same position, I'm still the chair, I think there's a meeting today to figure out those next steps.
That's another question that occurred to me overnight, Greg, Greg, are we, are we owners and are we fee simple owners?
The, well, the intermunicipal corporation.
So we own, so, so we own a share of the corporation? Are they actual shares or?
There's not actual shares, no, there's three member.
So Argos in that too?
Yeah.
So normally, if you had shares, you'd have a shareholders agreement, so we have an intermunicipal agreement?
Yeah.
With no exit clauses?
Well.
And you didn't draft it, thank, yeah, right. Okay. So I don't know, council, uh, um, I don't want, I want to go face those guys and try to answer for you guys on this one.
So we have, three thirty today, we have an airport.
Beg pardon? Yeah?
Okay, so the motion's on the floor. Questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Can I, uh, setting voting period for by-election? CAO?
Thank you, your worship, uh, so concerning the May eighteenth by-election, uh, in our, um, in our bylaw that allows us to use electronic voting, it allows council to set what advanced polling days means, uh, by resolution. And so in previous, uh, electronic elections, we have, uh, had a continuous voting period. Uh, so it makes no sense to have, say, nine to five voting, if people can vote on their computer at home at their convenience. There's no reason to limit the hours by which they can, they can exercise their right to vote. And so we're recommending that council set the advanced polling days as the continuous voting period from Saturday, May eleventh, starting at nine o'clock AM, until Saturday, May eighteenth, ending at eight o'clock AM. And it would end at eight o'clock AM on ordinary polling day, because ordinary polling day is from eight AM until seven PM, at which point the polls would close. And we would know who fills the seat.
Accept the, uh, staff recommendation with respect to setting the, uh, time of the voting day.
I'll second.
Seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Ferry terminal redevelopment?
Your worship, this is a, uh, a fairly brief summary of the, uh, activity around the ferry terminal redevelopment. Uh, where we are currently is that the, uh, the request for decisions for the prime consultant, the design consultant, to undertake the, the work for us at the ferry terminal, uh, will be closing, uh, next week? Tomorrow, tomorrow. And then we'll have a two-week evaluation period and be bringing back a recommendation. Now, what we'd like to do is bring it back at the committee of the whole meeting, have you call a special council meeting for the purpose of approving, uh, the recommendation from the steering committee on, on who to engage for that work. Also, uh, we have engaged on a couple of long order items. We have engaged East Point, uh, engineering to look after the work that, uh, is required on the pontoon, as well as the bridge that leads to the pontoon, and so, um, that work is, is beginning. And, uh, if you have any questions around the report, I'd be happy to answer or defer to Charles on particular items.
Go ahead, Jim.
Jeff, I know we've put our own money in, as have the, our sister municipalities. Um, have we had any money from the federal government?
Yes, so on the project, uh, we have, uh, six million dollars that's coming from a combination of provincial and federal. And off the top of my head, I don't recall if that's an even division, that six million, or if it's lopsided one way or the other, as sometimes the programs are.
But have we, have we received any?
Uh, no, we haven't received any of the revenue yet. There are triggers that, that will cause us to receive the revenue, and, and we're coming up on a, on a trigger pretty soon.
I'd just be interested to make sure we're, that we're going to get the money, that's all.
Oh, sure, yeah.
It's there.
Not worried about that.
Yeah. Okay. Good, so are we looking for, uh, who? Jerry, go ahead.
Sorry, wasn't on that, it was just a reminder that I think, uh, Charles had a small presentation on the asset management that we kind of skipped over earlier on, so.
Okay. You have to go. What's that? Yeah. We're gonna. Yeah, we might have to defer that. Okay, so we need to get done the, the stuff in the next five minutes that we have to get done. So is it the YMCA piece? Go ahead.
Just on the YMCA request for funding, um, I have had some correspondence, there's communication with the other CAOs. Neither of our partner municipalities have dealt with that request, they've asked some questions of the YMCA. I expect we'll have a conversation, myself and my colleagues, uh, sometime in the next week. And, uh, we'll, uh, we'll discuss that, we can discuss that at a later meeting.
Okay. Okay. They don't have a date that they need? Doesn't matter. I'm not sure. I don't know. Okay. Are we okay to leave that for a bit? Okay, appeal of town council vote seventeen, Wood, Crescent. For information, okay? All right, so we have additions, the economic impact, we did that, water utility, Councilor Wood? Uh, can you get that on? Wait, no, you got to press your light because it's on again.
See, I've got this darn thing up here.
Yeah.
So, uh, we received correspondence on March twenty-sixth from, uh, Nova Scotia Department of Environment, short, sweet. You are receiving this letter as the owner of a municipal public drinking water supply in the province of Nova Scotia to notify you of Health Canada's recent change to the guideline for lead in drinking water. Health Canada's recently lowered the health-based drinking, uh, water guideline for lead from, uh, zero point one zero milligrams per liter to zero 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 point five milligrams per liter, half, it's being cut in half. See the attached letter for additional information, and just quickly, if anyone's cruising through our website and finds this stuff, don't be alarmed, I've checked with the, uh, with Charles, we are meeting the current standards now. Uh, there is an indication in the attachment, uh, there's a little more information. There is no safe level of lead, it can affect brain development and behavior in children, and has been linked to high blood pressure and kidney problems in adults. Every effort should be made to minimize lead exposure throughout a person's life. Although lead can occur naturally in geological, geologic materials, the main source of lead in drinking water is through corrosion of plumbing materials with lead or brass components such as pipes, solder, faucets and fittings. The water that we deliver into our pipes for distribution throughout the town is, uh, water that meets the Canadian uh, drinking water standards for lead content. There will be some places where people still have lead, um, uh, laterals from the pipeline to their homes, they're rare. Uh, we found a few on Cliff Street when we did the project. That is a responsibility of a homeowner, homeowner, a homeowner can, if they choose to do so and should, uh, in circumstances where they have a, any concern about their laterals. It wouldn't be happening in new construction, but their laterals and so on have their water tested for, 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 uh, these, uh, lids. But this is really, the, the, the elephant in the room is that forty percent of Nova Scotia are living on wells, as were the people in Lake George, where we had our recent issues. And most, most of those people will show contaminants like this in their tests that they have them. The question is whether or not they're within drinking water standards, that likely aren't, and they, there are many other, um, heavy metals that could be affecting their water that are not affecting the people who are on regulatory systems like ours. So, uh, there will be some follow-up on this, and we'll make sure that we continue to abide by the Canadian drinking water standards when and if the province makes it mandatory to go to this new standard.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, your worship.
Okay, water utility, asset management, was that, was this? That was the presentation, so are we good? Should we wait for the asset management? Well, we should wait because Don's got to go. Yeah. When do you want to leave? Okay, yeah, we're gonna, we'll have to be done then. All right, uh, anything on camera? No, okay, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Yeah? Yeah.
If you could call a, a special council meeting for two reasons.
Yeah.
One would be to approve the voting period.
Mm-hmm.
And if you could approve the.
Okay. So I'm calling the meeting to order, record of attendance, absent with regrets. Okay, so number one, to approve the voting period. Do I have that motion? Okay. Moved, seconded, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried, and the second one was the utility vehicle, you said?
Uh, yes.
Okay, the te, utility? Oh, yeah, okay. Utility vehicle tender. Moved? Seconded? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, and let's do number three, the request for decision for the, uh, recreation infrastructure, the funds for that, so we can get moving. On the application, yeah. Okay? Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Motion to adjourn. Oh, no, not yet. Go ahead, CAO.
Just, the only thing that just pops to mind is that airport bridge funding, I apologize. Um, because we're already April second, I think clarity on, on that sixty days and that funding would be there for the airport, rather than wait till next week, if you don't mind approving that today, then we can, people will breathe a little lea- If you don't mind approving that today, then we can, people will breathe a little easier on the airport.
And that the recommendation made at committee of the whole be followed up and carried out by staff on the airport funding.
Moved and seconded? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried? Can I adjourn, CAO? Do you want to do it? Let's do the budget. Okay. Thank you, folks.